My name's Chris Lynch. Thanks for everybody attending tonight. It's a little different, a little more interactive session, so thank you for coming. How about we go around the table and just do quick intros?
I'm Kim Colvin, Board Recording Secretary.
Steve Merely, Superintendent.
Brian Kershling, Board Director.
Paul Ressler, Board Director.
Lisa Bosh, Board Director.
Amy Cortmeyer, Assistant Superintendent.
Abby Sardone, Director of Film and Sendings.
Tammy Stasza, Director of Central and there's a lot of central.
Amy Fulcher with the State Department.
Chris Diddy, Board Member.
Tony Grinch, Neighbor Senator, Johnson County Program Director.
Phil Hemingway, Board Director.
Jenny Mademeyer, Schimick PTO Vice President.
Melissa Krishnan, Schimick Care.
Harry Homestead, Advocate for Persons with Disabilities.
Amy Menzier, Coordinator of the Senate Day Learning.
Joan Dannenberg-Guth, Family Development Coordinator.
Wayne Van Heerden, Director of Facility Management.
Craig Hansel, Board Secretary.
We had to meet Chris Lynch, Board Director.
Laura Daly, Director of Learning Support.
All right, Laura, I think you're gonna kick us off?
Yep, I'm gonna kick us off just with a short presentation, just to give a little bit of some information about the recent timeline, meetings that have been held, and discussions that we've had, and some key points of what we are really looking at with changes in relation to the inter-agency agreement, and then trying to identify some next action steps. So, this is a recent timeline of some of the meetings that have occurred back in February. We reviewed the first draft of the inter-agency agreement. That was with a few of our ESC staff and a group of the VASP directors. That draft was then shared with all the VASP directors in early March on the 7th, an informational meeting with some ESC staff and the VASP directors and some of their board members were there. And there was a review of the key changes in the draft agreement and receiving some feedback and questions. The next formal meeting that occurred was March 29th. That was when, again, we had some ESC staff, a DHS representative, and the VASP directors were there. We met to hear input and discuss concerns and questions about the changes in the inter-agency agreement. And at that time, recognized that there were some things that needed to be worked out and for discussion to occur, so we offered to provide some additional support and to try to think of how we accommodating to those issues. On the 25th, about a month ago, we were all here discussing at the board meeting, the inter-agency agreement, and that was at the time it was decided to schedule this work session. And then between that time, on May 10th, earlier this month, we had another meeting with some ESC staff, again DHS representative and the VASP directors. And that was when we listed out just basically every issue or question that was relevant and that people had concerns about, and kind of listed solutions. And then revised, made some significant revisions in the inter-agency draft. And then at that time, we also extended an invitation, well, the invitation was extended earlier, but we've scheduled some meetings to meet individually with some VASP boards. And the meetings that have occurred thus far are listed up here, with the exception of one meeting, we have to reschedule that because they didn't have power that night and we couldn't go in and actually conduct a meeting. And we have full intention of meeting with any and all VASP boards so that we can have an individual meeting, continue to hear questions and address any concerns and come up with solutions. And so this is just a little summary of what's happened over the last few months. Anything anyone involved in that would add to that as we move along?
The only thing that I would add is that we also had a subcommittee meeting last week talking about fees. So that was on Thursday.
Yep.
We have a scheduled meeting on the 31st with...
Webber? No, Longfellow.
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 All right. So then, to highlight, what are the points of interest that we really need to continue to work through and what has been the most discussed issues and where we're headed with changes in the agreement is we recognize that the way that the original draft was worded, which included the three goals, the district goals of improving achievement in reading, in math, and in equity goal, that that was creating quite a bit of just confusion and that was maybe a point of misunderstanding and confusion. And so a solution that we were able to come up with was really to just adapt that language and come up with a statement that comes right out of our facility use statement in relation to partner agencies aligning their goals to make sure that they're compatible with those of the district. And in addition, through that collaboration and further discussion, we realized that really everything that we're talking about in terms of any evaluation or any kind of outcomes in terms of self-improvement or self-assessment is already embedded in a document that had been created in 2013, a few years ago, when I wasn't around at that time in this role, but when the VASP directors worked with Joan and Amy at that time and probably Susie, and created what is a document that's attached to the inter-agency agreement draft, the standards for out-of-school time program. They're commonly referred to as standards of care, so if you hear that term, it rolls off the tongue a little bit easier than standards for out-of-school time program. And so, really, that is the collaborative document and efforts that that group had gone through and, as I understand it, put hours and hours and a lot of discussion into that that details what we all believe is a quality out-of-school time program. And there are elements in there, those of you who have seen it, of a self-assessment. That is part of any good organization that conducts their own evaluation, and they certainly have requirements and stakeholders that they're responsible for as well. So rather than looking at it as a separate evaluation process, it was let's use what we've already agreed upon, that's of quality, and let's use the language that is part of our facility use agreement, that the goals will be compatible or in alignment with those of the district. So that kind of captures number one. The second is really focusing on program accessibility. In an effort to make all of our district programs and services and partner agency services accessible to all families, this was really where we felt that some additional clarification was needed and some additions to the draft and some edits to it. And so what we're asking and what we've been discussing is establishing a priority enrollment process through set-asides. And so you've heard the word set-aside slots. So what that means is just reserving based upon a school's FRL, percentage of certain number of enrollment slots that would be prioritized for families experiencing need. And we wanted to increase access, and so that's really what that is about. We also, through your work with and feedback from a variety of community members, including the Equity Committee, added a process for considering students with disabilities and adding a process regarding providing suspension, expulsion, or denial data from participating in the program. So those were some things that were revised and added to the inter-agency agreement that we've been discussing over the last few months. And then the third is demographic data. We've added a student data collection form to obtain some information about various demographics as well as that of the program staffs and boards, both of which are voluntary, but in order to be able to have a baseline of where we are with increasing and advancing toward equity goals, we need to have some baseline information to know if we really are making a difference. And so those were the three areas as we have been discussing. There's been some other questions and issues, of course, but those are the main three parts of the agreement that have been continued to be discussed. And it appears through those discussions and those collaborative efforts that we're at a place now where we need to decide, are there any other items for discussion or clarification before we would move toward the decision for the partner agencies to sign the inter-agency draft and identify items, if there are any, that need continued subcommittee work? For example, the fees group that met last week as Joan referenced, that was something that occurred prior to this document being created, and we can give an update on that and some changes that then we would be adding to proposing based upon that subcommittee work adding to the draft. And if we want to stick with the timeline that we are hoping to stick with, then we'd be looking at July 1st for that timeframe to determine if this is the draft and to give partner agencies an opportunity to sign that. So that's where we are, just as a quick overview, and you can continue the discussion for questions and answers through the group.
So two questions answered. Are we overall aligned? Do we have a feel for that or that's what we're gonna talk tonight? And then what do you need from the board?
Well, I think that...
So, for example, we're all aligned and good, probably.
Intentionally, we invited some of the VASP directors. We did that back at the March 10th board meeting, and we certainly would invite them to let us know if they have any questions, but we think that through the communication that we've had since that time, we're in alignment. I certainly don't want to speak directly for them, I think that's why they're at the table, but we...
Yeah, and I had sort of my similar version, the same question, just is there anything that either side of this negotiation is still wishing was different? I understand that there probably has to be some collaboration compromise to the form.
Give and take, whatever.
Yeah, I think we go back to the main things that we have been working out and trying to decide upon. I think that we've come to a place where we have clarification over those priority enrollment set-aside spaces. I think we've got our process for this articulated in the agreement and as well as the demographic data. The addition of the fee discussion is adding a little bit of language that the subcommittee talked about last week, so...
So I'm gonna go, silence is consent, so is there anything you could talk tonight?
Well, I guess from my standpoint, I know I've been somewhat vocal over the years, but I do feel that we've been making some positive strides, most definitely. From the beginning of the process in 2012 to now, I'm starting to feel like we're being heard, and so that is important to me as I think it is to my cohorts, my coworkers, my equals. So that is definitely important. This is, it's kind of a little off-topic, and I think this has been discussed, I know, with some of the directors. Can I go to the partnership timeline? Kind of the whole purpose for the beginning, for the beginning of the agreement?
Pull it over.
Yeah.
It's a second attachment.
So it is the ICCSD-VASP partnership timeline, and it does go from the beginning of our programs to today, not very far down, not even a quarter of the way down in 2010, kind of the reason that the district felt the need to get something in paper, that there was a discrimination complaint. Minor to some, important to us. Could it be put in there that the complaint was deemed unfounded? Every time that has been brought up, it has never been added that the program was not at fault, that it was, and maybe you can add a little bit on that, but that it was investigated, it was looked into, and it was deemed unfounded.
So can we say?
Putting it kind of like that leaves it open-ended. You know, there was complaint against these programs, maybe they're all doing something that's a little under-the-table, shady, which is not the case, but if that's not in there, the average person doesn't know that no fault was found.
Does that answer yes? Yeah. Good. Check, we're done now. Next.
But I think that's where kind of the premise for some accountability comes from, I think that's an important aspect of this and moving forward, that, you know, this agreement provides some accountability on both sides that we're working towards, not having this be, this kind of light be projected on us again. So that's why I really am behind the agreement and specifically the portion of the agreement that touch on accessibility, because I think it's important that even with the district goal, that we're moving towards that, both of us as partners are moving towards that, and that we're holding each other accountable, that there's that mutual exchange of what's in the best interest of all the kids that are in our program.
And I agree, and I don't think there's ever been any of us who have been truly against the agreement. I mean, from the first meetings that we were all in, in fact, it was a number of us who were in the very first meetings in 2012, all of us said at that point, this agreement has the potential to be wonderful, and we knew that, and we've worked very hard to get from there, to here. So to have that acknowledge that we have never been against any of these agreements. As I, as I got up and spoke at the last meeting, between Amy and I, we're probably the longest that have been here. I know, we're really not that old, but 1995 was when I started at Central, and so I've been to a lot of meetings. I've been, and, you know, we've always worked to take care of any and all children that we can, to give them that school experience, not in classroom. You know, they're learning, they're learning in a fun way where they don't realize that they're learning and they're having fun. And, you know, I think every one of us can say, parents show up and their kids are mad that they show up, they don't want to go home, because they're learning and they're having fun, and so we've never been against the agreement. The school district did need to know what we were about, and it was time, but again, we are thankful that our concerns and our questions have refined and feeling we have been heard and we have been listened to. And so for me personally, that is a huge step.
Great. I think from a board perspective, that's what we're hoping for, so, perfect.
Can I ask you a question about accessibility? Accessibility as well as fees, it was brought up, but I'm not sure there was more context provided for what we changed with the fees. Joan, do you have it right there in front of you?
I do, I do. So in the inter-agency agreement, under accessibility, what we don't want to have happen is that a fee, especially for summers when there's a lot of field trip fees and activity fees, we don't want that to be a barrier to participation. So sometimes families are asked to pay several hundred dollars upfront, and even if they're on childcare assistance, that's a huge barrier to be able to participate. So it's hard, because this is where accessibility and running a business kind of hit head-on, and so they're trying to make their books balance, and we're trying to get kids in the program who can't afford it. So what we came up with is number eight under accessibility, that we would significantly reduce summer activity and other auxiliary fees to accommodate barriers to participation for families on free and reduced lunch, which can be disclosed by the family, and then build transportation and field trip fees into the program tuition. So that's the compromise that we came up with. And then we clarified that number six would be to waive school year registration activity fees, because school year, the fee issue is different than it is for summer. So it's expensive. So like, do you pass it off to the families or do you pass it off to the program? And I think that's where negotiations are continuing.
Can I ask you a question? Do the standards of care, I guess, are held up, the outcome measurement? I understand with the things we had up there, with the accessibility, the draft data, what your outcome measure? I'm wondering if there's other outcomes that the VASP is going to be expected to measure?
I think it depends on what they assess they want to, what their goals are. So, I mean, you could do some things on student surveys, you could do some things on parent surveys.
Oh, they mentioned some other, yeah.
Yeah.
Data to measure participants' progress towards goals, and I just wondered if there was something specific to mind about, this is not a document that's tailored made for the VASP situation, so I understand it might not.
Well, and it was, it is, it was, the Iowa Alliance for After School Care came up with this, and so they're saying that all good after-school programs...
I thought it was more than all, all built use.
Statewide. And so then, we took a, you know, group of people, how many times did we need, like, every long, fifty? I don't know, for a long time. And then so it was both the directors and district staff that we said, okay, how do we want to make this tailored to Iowa City? So if, you know, I don't know, if there's any one of your goals that you would have in your program now? That you would just...
I mean, any sort of, you know, enhancing certain enrichment areas, improving, you know, cultural exposure through bringing in outside resources from the community.
So I think this just gives the framework. They come up with their goals and they come up with how they're gonna measure their goals.
And that's part of the system.
All right, well, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the for and after-school programs for all you do, and I know that there's times we're gonna push on each other, right, to improve, but if we always keep it in the context of the objective is to meet the needs of our kids and our families, then hopefully that's what we're seeing in driving.com objective when we're doing that together. So, thank you for everybody's work between the last time we talked to this and now, and there's no further comment. I'll give you guys a chance to move on if you want, not stay to 10 o'clock tonight, so...
Other people need your...
We're gonna move on to the shimick.
Okay, oh, did you have a question?
Is someone from the paint gallery allowed to speak?
No.
No? Really? Okay.
That's why it's a relatively firm standard, because community comments always open to you at the start of the meeting, and we don't take community comment in work sessions. So thank you. With that, we're gonna transition to shimick. If there's anybody that was invited to shimick, it's not at the table. I think Savannah owned the membership of that group. Yep.
What's that? I think Savannah's gonna be our lead on this one, just in terms of the process standpoint, because she can, actually she may turn it over to one of her playground committee chairs. I can start though.
Yeah. All right, how about this, we're gonna start with shimick. Why don't we, again, do one quick round of introductions? So Chris Lynch, Board Director.
Kim Colvin, Board Recording Secretary.
Steve Merely, Superintendent.
Brian Kershling, Board Director.
Paul Ressler, Board Director.
Lisa Bosh, Board Director.
Savannah Hamley, Schimick Elementary Council.
Victoria Miller, Sixth Grade Schimick.
Heather Bray, Schimick Parents and Old Chair.
Chris Diddy, Board Member.
Phil Henry, Life Board Member.
Jenny Mademeyer, Schimick PTO Vice President and Playground Committee Member.
Melissa Krishnan, Schimick Parent and Playground Committee Member.
Harry Homestead, Advocate for Persons with Disabilities.
Brad Ballander, Schimick PTO President.
My name's Ben Burzine, I was part of the Schimick Playground Committee.
Wayne Van Heerden, Director of Facility Management.
Craig Hansel, Board Secretary.
So I think Savannah, we're gonna start with an overview of the process, is that right?
Can I just, for a second?
What is it?
I just have a question, has everyone at the table been invited by the board and can other people be brought up to the table?
I'm not interested in increased participation myself, but we can have that conversation by the board if you'd like.
Is anyone at this table qualified to determine if a playground needs ADA accessibility? We have a playground, an ADA playground expert here, someone that is qualified.
Kingsley. Kingsley.
What sort of planning has Mr. Bosh been provided by the district to qualify him to look at playground plans and determine if he has ADA compliance?
This is a board discussion, right? So I do understand your point.
I, well, I know that on the list there was some ADA experts that were invited to attend, but...
Savannah, did you invite them?
No, actually Kingsley did, so we can let him speak to that.
They were unable to attend.
Okay.
I think I sent that in email to Harry Homestead in regards to that. I requested one member from that, the ADA Compliance Officer, her name is, I Googled it, Tiffany Stevenson Earl. I asked her, she said the next day that she was unable to participate. I let Superintendent Merly know, so she's not here.
And are you qualified to look at a playground draft and determine if it meets ADA compliance laws?
Based on the 2010 ADA standards, yes, that's pertaining to, I can give you the email sent from Steve Crew, who's the individual at the state level that sent me the requirements in regards to that, and so it speaks to kind of the elevated areas as well as the ground play areas as well.
So if we have questions about the ADA compliance of the playground, you can answer those?
I don't know if I can answer all of them, I mean, it depends on those questions, I mean, to be...
Okay, so you don't have any sort of certification that qualifies you to determine if a playground is ADA?
I think the question was asked and answered. So, Kingsley, I think the question was asked.
So the answer is no.
Kingsley just provided his answer.
I'm still not in clear on his qualifications, he offered to send an email about his claim, but I'm...
All right, are we gonna have a board discussion tonight or not?
Yes, we are, we gonna move on. You gonna have your presentation, thank you.
Did you have a specific...
Well, my question was, is everyone at the table that was, got approval from the board?
Maybe I could just speak to that? So one of the things that I did was I asked Savannah if she could invite PTO representatives from officers, she invited if she can invite people from the playground committee, if she could invite some parents who were in favor of the decision and some parents who were opposed to the decision. So we'd have the opportunity to hear from both sides in the discussion. And so Savannah went through that process and identified people who fit that role and submitted those names, and we moved forward from there.
So we have four who are opposed and who were, I'm sorry, four who were for the parents and who are...
Again, I asked for officers from the PTO, chairs of the committee, parents opposed, parents against.
Okay.
And you asked, you asked me for two.
Well, is it possible to allow Laura Weste Meyer in on the discussion?
I don't have interest in that.
Wendy Stevenson is a Schimick parent who attended all the playground meetings, and I believe Tony is, I don't know if he has ADA compliance qualifications, but he is a playground designer who might be able to help us with some of the questions.
Do you want to talk the next half hour in attendance or do you want to go with it?
We just want to make sure that we get some parent to answer our questions.
Those people could be allowed to be part of the discussion, and just like that, you could decide on that.
Are the four board members that want to expand the membership? I'm ready to, let's just go around the table, I'm ready to go with the current.
To go with the current, everybody here received an invitation.
Who is the second individual you said?
I believe Tony, I think you're from Landscape Structures, you design playgrounds or...
Yes.
Do you, do you have any sort of qualifications on ADA compliance on playgrounds?
I'm a certified playground station, so I can handle this.
Okay.
That's not ADA. There is nobody in here who has certification. There is.
So Paul, where are you at?
I was asking a question, who's not ADA.
I would say I'm fine with this.
Tasha? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you there. That was my mistake, Laurie.
I would personally rather err on making sure everybody gets to be part of the discussion so we don't feel like we've left anywhere else, and so we don't end up in the same place we currently are.
All right, Latasha?
I don't have a problem if people want to come to the table, but if this is about to turn into, okay, Correll, I'm opposed. I'm just being honest, because it's already extra tension and we're trying to do what's best for kids, and so I just hope that if we ask folks if this is a respectful conversation. So I don't have a problem, you wanna come up here, cool, come on, sit next to me, I'm on my stuff, but I just don't feel like I want to do much extra for no reason.
Do you want to expand it or not?
Yes, but I just want to put my little keys on.
All right, so I would like to invite Phil.
Tony, if you would like to be part of the discussion.
Director Lynch, I would just say, I mean, as long as the questions are, I mean, I love it, if there's a little bit of attack as far as that was concerned at the beginning, I would just assume that it would bear on both sides, I saw that.
Can you give...
Appreciate the questions, I'm just saying that it seemed like it was specifically targeted at me, like initially from a rush standpoint, I hope that, you know, somebody with his expertise as well would get the same kind of question perspective as well, so I...
I gotta ask, in the board, you were over there, so when you came back, so I apologize, you helped us actually walk back to the table.
No worries.
So Phil, was who again?
Can we allow Tony and Laura Weste Meyer in?
Sounds good. Tony, Laura. So where's Ben?
He's right there.
All right, we're ready to start? All right, we're ready to start. Everybody good? All right, so I think we're going to start with the process. Can we bring it up?
What's it? Yeah, what do you want done?
It's not it, no. This one? So, this is the timeline that I submitted. I will admit it does not go back to the very beginning, which would have been September of 2015. This simply reflects the time that I was serving as the interim principal proceeding by being named the Shimick Principal. So, the conversation regarding the playground really began in November of 2015. So we were fully aware that a playground was going to need to occur at Shimick. At that time, the timeline was a little unclear, whether it would be summer 2017 or summer 2018. The project was expedited and identified in the spring of 2016 to be happening in summer 2017, so that would be this summer. At that time, the playground guidelines were not yet finalized. And so we were operating under the understanding we had at that point, which was that we were using PTO funding and that we had to make decisions about how many structures, what sizes, and details of that sort. That was soon clarified at the end of last school year, going into the summer. And so we gained clarification and the guidelines in which we are the first school to abide the fend for the playground policy guidelines that you were fully aware of. So that changed our cadence and what we were working towards. We no longer needed to secure the funding because thank you for the lifecycle funds that were used to fund this project. So we were given a $125,000 budget to include installation costs. And with that, we were also explained what needed to be built with those funds. So developmental play structures for pre-KK, 1 through 3, and 4 through 6. And the purpose of that was to create three separate structures that met the developmental needs of all three of those age groups throughout their school day. And so that was quite the task. We asked for teacher input, students created wish lists, the playground committee was formed. Our first playground committee meeting was in May of 2016. We had all of that clarification regarding process and timeline in the fall. And so we began creating wish lists in October. The playground committee looked through catalogs, we made lists of components that we really wanted to be part of the structure. And so some of those were components that are part of our current structure, things we know kids love. Some of those are things that we saw in catalogs. And so we made lists of components that we really wanted to be a part of each of those. We submitted those to the physical plant, they then put those out to the vendors, they came back with those. We saw those in January and the playground committee looked at the design. At that time, one of the bids came back overbid and so that was not presented to the committee. However, the miracle play structure was submitted to the, or shown to the committee. We looked at those, made lists of things we'd like to alter and take back to the designer. And so that happened January to February. In February, we learned about a location change based on the implementation of the playground really having a large impact, not just for right now, but thinking ahead to the future. So given our 2020 renovations, we were anticipating the addition of the templex in order to renovate our building within one school year and two summers. If we did not have the templex on the property in 2020, it will take us three consecutive school years of interruptive learning environment to make those renovations happen. And so to expedite the renovations in one school year, two summers, the templex would come. The only location it would fit would be in the location of the current structure. If we put a new playground where the current structure is now, there is no way to get the templex around that playground anywhere else onto the property. So while the soccer field might be an ideal location, if the new playground went right there, you wouldn't be able to get the templex onto the property, it would be back to three consecutive years of construction. So that changed the site, which changed the fall zone. So when we say fall zone, we mean exact space of where the playground will land. So it went from thinking it would be right where the current structure is to being just flush with the blacktop. It is not behind the school, it is parallel to the blacktop. And so the location changed when that was shared in February. At that time, there were also some suggestions about making some changes to some components. Those came back to us in March. Those were shared again with the committee on March 8th. And we were able to either choose to stay with the design that we originally proposed or the design that was shared with the component changes on March 8th. And the committee had a majority vote for the design that had changed some of those components. So that was the design that went to the board, that was approved with a 4-3 vote. And then from there, contracts moved forward regarding construction.
Has there been any change in the PTO's point of view since then?
There have been a lot of opinions, both that have been vocal at meetings and that have been submitted to you as board members on both sides of the issue.
But no formal PTO action?
Correct.
The majority of the PTO board, myself and the secretary and my co-Vice President had requested an action and it was not followed up on by our board president. We had the majority of the PTO board.
Can you clarify the action that you had requested?
We had asked for an ADA compliance officer to come. We had asked to have the results of the committee basically, say that we don't approve them because there was some areas, some serious concerns that were not addressed. We felt by accepting this that we were accepting the results and, like I said, the majority of the board had emails. Brad is the president, he could, I don't know if he has anything, so.
Yeah, the response to that was that it was not our PTO board's responsibility to double check the district's work with regard to ADA compliance.
Okay, but even though the majority of the board requested no action, it's taken?
I have a concern that while you spoke, you not once did you say anything about inclusion for children with disabilities. And that's why we're here. And also, you have a same thing about the safety issue. By relocating that playground, there may be a safety issue. And you refuse for the police chief to allow one of his officers, who specializes in safety, to come back onto the ground to look and give a report.
That's an inaccurate statement. I spoke to the police chief and I passed that information on to Duane and to Amy Court Meyer and let him know that if the district wanted to move forward with that, that someone from the district would be contacting him. But that I wasn't going to independently make that.
Yesterday, we did meet the police department specialists onsite. They were going to try and give us a report by date, but we haven't seen any yet. But they were there and did review the site, as requested.
I had gone to Shimick with the police chief, it's public grounds, as a board director. And we discussed and he raised concerns and he wanted his specially trained sergeant to survey the property. I think this is a service we should avail ourselves, not just in this instance, but in many instances, because it's a free service and they have a trained law enforcement agent that can give us a free survey, they do it to anyone in the public.
You're saying you're sending that up?
And I did try to-
You're sending that up, is that what you're saying?
No, I, yeah.
He made, he made the request that you followed through with the superintendent. I met, I met the sergeant out there yesterday with Jeff Barnes and Savannah.
I spoke with the police chief on Monday as well and he was going to follow up on that and get that done.
My point was, the visa was made.
We've also got Shimick Playground Committee minutes.
Can we separate two issues though, Phil, just before we get too deep in, before we get too deep in this? I mean, one is, what's the standard for playgrounds moving forward, right? And I think we've got the handbook, right? So Duane, correct me if I'm wrong, so that-
You do.
So the handbook, which was approved in like April of, or at least reviewed, sorry, August of 2016.
It was up to acta the actual.
That's what's on, that's what's on the document.
It's been recently, it was revised in February of this year.
There aren't, there aren't new standards coming out and we agreed to look at those standards and update the playground policy.
So I'm just sticking with the process standpoint. So normally, if we want to drive improvement, we establish a committee, go look at, you know, is the playground handbook sufficient, is it not? If you want to build an improvement, we build it into the standard, so that when we go do the next project, you get that upfront, right?
Right.
So you, so you just said there's, there's already going to be a review of it?
Yes, we agreed to review the, Kingsley, we're going to review those standards when they come out.
There's new 2018 guidelines that we'll have to update in regards to.
So would we be open to commissioning a committee? Again, it's work alone, we got to decide that, but, and I'm not dictating a timeline, right? Would we be open to establishing a committee to look at that?
Most certainly, I would be.
Yeah, I would just urge them to know there's some, you know, there's a, there's a member who has, well, Lynn Sand, Professor Lynn Sand, or somebody I have a high regard for, has significant experience dealing with ADA guidelines, accommodations in law. And so I would, you know, just want to make sure that he was a part of that committee because he's helped me through this process.
Oh, right, you, I mean, you have to go and get, you know, we'd ask for volunteers, just like we did every other time. We do some asking for volunteers, you get the experts.
Yeah, so we look at, review that and look at any changes that need to be made, to update the policy.
Now, that would be a going forward approach, right?
These guidelines haven't come out yet, so, yeah. There's 2018 guidelines that are coming out.
There's new, a new standard coming out, okay.
Well, I was talking to Lynn today and even saying, leading on to the existing guidelines, there's, there's aspects of this that are not accurate.
He brought those concerned concerns up to me. And so we went through some of those concerns and were able to address some of them. Some of them have been talked about and not necessarily been confirmed, just because they've just been out there, kind of in the media, just discussed without kind of confirmation, but I was able to kind of work through some of those things that he brought in from his, of his concerns.
So the policy handbook was not in compliance with ADA code, what issues to, when we used it to design Shimick playground?
There's 2018 standards and so those concerns have not come out.
Right, but I'm saying, was it, it's not, I understand what Chris was saying, he was saying that language comes up, our current policy is not up to date in ADA.
Well, just an example is, I thought Title III, maybe in English, should be talking about Title II.
Yeah, so he was concerned about a typo and some other changes that we need to clean up from that standpoint. So that language should have read Title II and said Title III, we talked about.
But I think he went through the themes, he said that the handbook is based on 2010 ADA standards and they've revised since, and the handbook is not.
Well, first and foremost, I don't want to go back and forth based on what Professor Sandman said. I'd rather him just be at the discussion because I think it'd be better from that standpoint and to kind of address the conversation we had because I don't want to speak for him. And I'm sure that many of you, maybe you feel comfortable speaking for him, but I don't.
I don't feel comfortable speaking for him, but I mean, part of the problem that some of us have reservations have is that we don't have 100% confidence that the thing would done right in the first place. And so that, that kind of goes to that issue. It seems like, you know, after people raise concerns, and they did for trying to get off ducks in the middle, but, you know, it seemed like it should have been done before.
Yeah, directly, there's multiple concerns that, I mean, I don't think have clearly been laid out. And I think that's kind of the main issue of this issue. And I think there's process concerns, there's a discussion between compliance, overall, just legal compliance with ADA standards.
I'm still unsure about.
And inclusivity as well, as far as whether or not this playground can be made to be more accessible. I think that we were, we're throwing out, a lot of people have thrown out a lot of misinformation, inconsistent language as it applies to that. And I was never asked, you know, I was asked by Melissa, Laura, and Harry, but I wasn't asked by any other folks as far as, you know, that particular piece and whether or not we clean up that, that language. Because I, I thought I was concerning, even when it was brought up at that initial board meeting. Because I think that that's what everybody ran with, but I mean, there's a really, there's a different kind of conversation when we're talking about inclusiveness than we're talking about ADA standards. And that's kind of going back to your comment, I'm not sure, your name, I apologize. As far as kind of working through those 2010 standards, you know, you can look back and count the number of accessible components and some of the other things and kind of come to that declaration that, you know, from the design standards and the 2010 accessibility review, that is ADA compliant as required by law. But I think there's, you know, maybe I'm not going to speak for you, you know, pretty clearly that there are some questions as far as, you know, some check the standards as far as more accessible or more inclusive.
All I know is Lynn today, when I was talking to him, said, I've looked at it, I don't think you can tell whether it's ADA compliant.
Yeah, there's, there's some.
And I'm the one removed from it, I certainly can't tell whether it's ADA compliant.
I would agree. I think there is issues as far as looking at the actual design and saying that, just the pictures of it. I think he was stating that, I don't necessarily know if he had the actual design components and was literally walking through and counting them. I'm not sure, I mean, he just had it, it was on display. He said he wouldn't even look at everything, so I don't know.
It's important to note that the manufacturers and designers are looking at the actual United States or federal ADA guidelines, not this handbook. This is our handbook, this is our roadmap, how we proceed, how we put together projects. When they design equipment, they use US standards, ADA standards, that are dictated by the federal government, not by the Iowa City School District.
I actually have a letter here that says that they're compliant.
Does it depend on though?
Yes.
I mean, I would want some independent certification on it, and I just feel like I'm hearing.
That we have someone qualified to answer these questions, and I am not certified in any of this, however.
And I can ask?
Just talk.
I can't imagine these companies go out and just build stuff willy-nilly and make themselves open to that kind of wide berth. I don't know, but it's just something that I, you know, I think.
I submitted to Kingsley and to Steve, based on information we were given, to the access board, which is the board that handles ADA, it sets up the rules in my language. And they have specialists on board and we sent the information. And one of the things he was real concerned about, and we've heard in other places as well, is the grounding. The chips, the wood chips, they're not safe. Kids can get injured on them, get scrapes and they hold germs. But more importantly, a power wheelchair, if it has rain, can't get through it. And that's the big difference.
I think there's some challenges in terms of expectations for, for the project. I actually would concur that the manufacturers, both manufacturers, they're obligated to design a playground to be ADA compliant. The Americans with Disabilities Act, all it's looking at is a bare minimum of things you can count and measure as far as accessibility. So in other words, removing barriers, not all barriers. From what I understand in terms of reading and understanding the process, there's a disconnect in terms of, from the beginning of the process, I understand and I apologize that this is a very divisive sort of thing that's happened at Shimick and I think we're all in agreeance that we don't want that really to end that way and we don't want further playgrounds as the school district continues, you know, their effort that Ben and everyone is involved in. And it seemed that an expectation was, wait a second, we have a child who has specific needs. That's what the ADA, in terms of the spirit, was intended for, was to make sure that, you know, yes, the surface is firm, stable, and slip resistant. That's the language as far as what Harry's talking about, as far as being accessible. And I can go real deep in terms of engineered wood fiber, there's a court case in Green Bay that says that it is, can be an acceptable, accessible surface, but three conditions must be met. First condition is that it must have proper drainage underneath it. School district, I've worked on a couple of projects with the school district, they're taking care of that, the specifications on the front end. Second piece is that it's installed so that the engineered wood fiber is in a compacted state. In other words, the firm, stable, slip resistant part. And I can't answer to how that's being ultimately put in. And then the third piece is that it's regularly and frequently maintained so that there isn't the slope requirements on that surface. That's a very, very difficult piece of that. So there's that piece of the disconnect. The other is, you know, we have a child who has an expectation to play in a playground. You know, the school district, everywhere you go, there's a sign on the door, child focused, I'm sorry, yeah, child-centered, future-focused is, you know, your slogan. And there's a child at the school who's wanted to play at the playground, there was an expectation set from the beginning and from what I understand, for several years in the process, where we will work on a design so that the child has the ability to be in the middle of play. Everyone should have that right, to be in the middle of play. That is the spirit of ADA. And actually, way back in 1997, when we were first, well, actually, 1990, when we were trying to figure out what this ADA meant for play areas. that's when ADAG came about, developed in 2000, the area guidelines for play areas. And actually, that was for, added for being up to the 2010 ADA standard. But anyway, um, the spirit of it was to allow all children to, to be in the middle of play. And what's happened is the industry, they will produce plans that you have this baseline in, oh, thank you. And the design is compliant.
I, I agree with you in almost everything you've said, and the district relied on their, their playground designers to provide us a playground that met ADA standards. We have been told through analysis by several people, the manufacturers, one of them, uh, the, uh, the actual installer, other people like that, and say, we've exceeded the number of minimum requirements for this playground based on the size of the playground, based on the number of students that are going to use the playground, that all has a factor, so I agree with you. We, in our front-end specs, we talk about drains, we talk about compaction, it's there. Okay, the hardest part is you, and I agree, I couldn't agree with you more, the hardest part is to keep it compacted, and we've got a routine program where we go out every several years around the district, and we've been replacing softball with engineered wood fibers and doing a better job of it, so that needs to improve, it's a tough thing to do, but we've been doing it. So, the real issue for, for me as a director, the guy that has to get these projects built, we're, we're providing a basic playground structure for every school as part of our Pebble Playground Replacement Policy, okay? We just started doing that a year ago, uh, up until then, it was always PTOs, they're always raising their own money. So, we're, we're now doing that, we've got a, we've got a schedule we've laid out for the next 20 years, we need to get through them all, we have limited funds. So, really, from this point going forward, from my perspective, is if we want to make them more inclusive because we have children with needs, I'm all for it, but don't tell us that it's not an ADA compliant playground, it's a basic structure. PTOs will be allowed to add structures, the district will be allowed to add structures, so they can raise funds as needed, and if we want to go out there to default and put in an ADA, or not an ADA compliant, a more inclusive piece of playground equipment, America around, for example. There's funds the PTO has, we can do that, and there's even a space reserved to do that in this particular plan. So, I really think if this group's going to be productive, it's, how do we go forward? You know, it was, the Shimick people put in an order, not time and effort into this whole playground design. I didn't personally get involved till the very end because I needed to, but let's not waste that effort. They, they designed a good playground, it meets minimum standards, it actually exceeds minimum standards, so let's talk about how to make these things better moving forward, if that's truly what we want to do.
I, I think, and again, I, we're, we're not too far off here, Dwayne, the, the issue is, expectations for Shimick was different than, and, and what you're talking about in terms of exceeding, it's actually more stuff you can count and more stuff you can measure. Well, inclusive was brought in to the mix as far as design because it added the personnel, the people element to the environment. And here we have a golden opportunity, and I think, again, ADA compliant shouldn't be good enough for what the school district should settle for as far as the player, we have an opportunity to make that right on a current project. It's not too far in the process, yes, you've ordered the equipment, I've, I've been in the play industry for 31 years, and I know they've got a, a built time, they can make changes to stuff, you're a big enough client for both those manufacturers, they are going to have good customer service, and they'll make changes for you, but I guess what, what I want to say is, shouldn't the process be such where, what you're budgeting perhaps, what your goal is for the initial design that those manufacturers are to produce, shouldn't it be where we're actually using the language inclusive? To me, ADA compliant isn't good enough.
That's, that's the discussion moving forward, and I agree with you. One other clarification about the tenpence, okay, because I think this group needs to know it to have a good conversation. We, we looked at the construction that needs to take place at Shimick, and it's three summers and two school years is what it would take without the tenpence, okay? We've done projects with students in the building, Penn's a good example, and it's not pretty, okay, and it's not safe. And if we can put a tenpence there and get half of the student body into the tenpence, which we did at Twain, we did at Lucas, we did at Corville Central, we're going to do it at Southeast next, it is so much better to, to isolate a part of the building so the contractors can get in there and renovate the building, do it properly, and keep children safe, so the tenpence is about safety, and unfortunately, that's where it needs to go. Uh, there's a, there's a sacred seven tree forest out there that we don't want to touch, and there's a retention pond out there that we really can't fill in, there's one way into that site. If the playground goes there, there's no place for the tenpence on that site unless we put it in the middle of the parking lot, and I'm not so sure the parking lot's big enough, so really, that seemed like a good solution. And moving the site, that, I have to fess up, I'm the guy that brought this to, to the Shimick folks and said, hey, if we're going to do a tenpence, this playground location needs to be up near the play, the hard surface, so as an extension of the hard surface play area we already have, into the, into the playground equipment, and this seemed to be a reasonable alternative that we talked about with the committee. Now, I'll let Ben and others in the committee can talk about that, but that's how that happened, okay? And it is, it is about safety for kids, and that tenpence is about safety, we've shown how it works, it's, it's just a better way to renovate a building. It's, it's not, uh, at Penn, we had open hallways and corridors and exposed electrical conduits and heating and cooling ducts, and even at a certain point at Lucas this year, it's not, it's not a good way to renovate a building. So, the tenpence is a good solution, there's got to be a compromise here, we felt that was a good compromise for everybody in the tape, in the room to hear that, that's how that happened, okay? So, moving forward, we really would like to use a tenpence, if we don't, then everybody needs to be okay with three summers and two school years and having kids in a construction site.
All right, some process checks, so is anybody not aligned to establishing a committee to relook at the playground handbook versus the 2018 standards that are going to come out?
Yes.
We're good with that?
Yes.
And we'll follow our normal process, get experts, get?
There's a couple, there's just a couple of things I'd like to put in.
Is that, sorry, Phil, is that on this point, are you talking about this point? Because I'd like to, from a process standpoint, I'd like just to align to establish a committee to go work the future standard.
I have a problem with doing a committee.
Yeah, okay, I just want to handle one thing at a time. We're all good?
Yes.
Steve's good? Awesome?
Right here.
You're hiding back there.
Sure.
So, we can talk timing, or you guys can come back with some sort of proposal, obviously, you know, timing is wise if you're for the, the next wave of projects, right? We have to back it up and?
Well, we, we have a couple of small ones that are also going in the summer, Lemmy's getting a project.
But this would be for next year, probably, right?
Yeah, for the next cycle. I can tell you what those are. What's that?
We'd start as soon as they're out.
And we can just work towards whatever.
We have the process ready to go, so as soon as they're, we're, we're.
Right on, beautiful.
Yeah, so directly mentioned, there's a couple of things within the policy that are already being looked at, are being defined, and I think, through the process standpoint, the new guidelines can incorporate those as well.
And it's very possible like IPM, it might be a couple of year process, maybe we do what we can do now, and new standards come out, whatever. No, no misalignment there, we're good, right? All right, so next step's on Shimick, is that what you want to talk about, Phil?
Yes, a few things, um, first off, and the foundation kind of way, but when we were voting on this, I had a discussion with a lot later forward, and I asked him who our ADA compliance officer was at that time. And he wasn't sure, even though it was him. I raised the question at the board meeting, was either our ADA compliance officer had signed on on the playground? And he said that he believed that that was true. Where do we stand with that, was that true, since he didn't know that he was the officer and he approved the plan, he didn't know he was a coordinator?
So, I mean, we're going to talk about.
Well, no, I, I think it's, I think it's, I just want to get that clarified when we go on to the RFPs and the, and other things.
So, we're going to talk about conversations that I have with individual board members, I think there's a lot of things I want to share in general, publicly, not just privately. But speaking to your additional question or comment that you had right there, I would agree, yes, I did not know that I was ADA compliance person. I did check with Steve, that was an email I was referencing earlier, and he sent me an email back saying, you know, normally that falls with the equity director, at times, districts can be different.
Sure.
It can fall with a number of different people, um, I talked with Steve, um, we decided that because of the work that I've previously done around ADA things, that it would be, you know, good for me to be that particular person, and I am that person. And so, I had to spend a couple of quick hours, long hours, over that, a couple of days after I talked with Steve, kind of, you know, familiarizing myself with the plans as well as looking through all the 2010 ADA guidelines, all the different changes and everything else, to make sure that I could, you know, at least give some type of review as it applies to whether or not it meets ADA requirements by law.
No, I understand, that was, but, but this was before the vote.
In that case, also, Kingsley, the website needs to be updated because some Susan somebody is listed as a compliance officer.
Yeah, I saw that on the email, so there's two, ADA, I think this gentleman was, too, as well, is a, is a huge document. And so, Susie Polton used to be the 504, um, be the 504 coordinator, which is under ADA law as well, and so we just have to update that. I'm no longer, I'm, I wasn't the 504 coordinator, that's Kate Callahan, so we will make that change, it's already been somewhat made on our website. I didn't know the Department of Education had different information, so we will work with them to make sure they have the correct information even for.
Okay, does everybody in the room know that you have a law background?
Yes.
I don't think everybody knows that.
Well, if not, but the people that are asking the questions, I think, do.
Yeah, now, the RFP, when this playground changed three different locations, a lot's been said about the first company being overbid and everything, and we didn't get the, the actual.
Well, let's, let's talk about that, Phil.
Well, no, and, and.
If you're going to make a comment, I'd like to address.
Can I just finish my?
What, what is the question?
Question is, when we changed the elevation and the original intent of the RFP as to, you know, one had a retaining wall, one didn't, one was going to have a ramp, one won't.
Well, the bids were expired.
Yeah, the bids, the bids were expired, does that constitute a rebidding or explain to us the whole RFP process?
Short answer.
How this one didn't, didn't trigger a new RFP?
Well, let's start with what actually happened in the beginning, it was not a bid process, it was not a list of equipment that was given to every vendor and said, give us a price, what was given to the vendors is a budget. We said, we have a $100,000 budget at Shimick, what can you provide that will give us the most equipment, the biggest bang in that $100,000? We presented those, that we gave that to the two vendors that were, that ultimately gave us quotes back, and they gave us a quote and a proposal. The second vendor was high by like $25,000, and, and so we said, okay, we just can't afford that. The committee looked at him and said, we're fine with this, with the $100,000 quote, and then we were, we went forward from there. So, substantially, the equipment, I don't believe, was changed a whole lot, it's just the location of it's changed, and there, and the arrangement may have changed, but we didn't change enough to say we need to go out and get new quotes because they've already exposed themselves. The vendors have already exposed what they would do for $100,000 and $125,000, it really isn't fair to, to go out and redo that when they were giving you a proposal based on a budget, it wasn't a bid based on actual design, there's a difference.
I have a question though, in our PTO minutes, Savannah told us in its document, our PTO minutes, which are voted on by the PTO, that we were supposed to see three drawings from each vendor and get to send them back, so I think that was the expectation for the playground committee, and that, that is in the minutes, I think Wendy might be able to.
The three, that would have been the three structures?
No, I, I think it says.
Not the three separate?
No, it says three, if you, if you go back to our PTO meeting minutes from October 12th, I believe it is, um, I think they were supposed to be in the board docs, but I'm not sure if I should have got in there or not. But it states that we were supposed to see three different drawings from two different vendors, so I think that was the expectation. And I'm also curious too, because on the RFP, it says a total of all built bid items shall not exceed $95,000. Well, the Boland bid was $99,275, and also, the RFP also says a target budget of $100,000 for, the target budget of $100,000 is for all structures, delivery, and unloading, but the Boland bid for $99,275 excludes unloading. And I'm also curious, um, we didn't see, um, any itemized bid from Boland, and that was, the RFP says quotes need to be itemized by the individual structure, um, we've seen them for outdoor recreation, we've not seen them for Boland. Let's see, the, it says, if received prior to deadline, the bid states that the prices are good for 30 days. So, if you voted on the one that came in December, that was, uh, no good, so you clearly asked for a new one and, um, before the, before the board bid on it, but that, we weren't asked, we didn't ask the other company to rebid on that at all?
So, along for a piece, again, the directions that were given to Ben Graham, Playground Committee, was $100,000. The $95,000 state that was put out there, I think it was, you know, I don't know if it was clerical or what, somebody didn't hear me right, but it was $100,000 was the budget, okay?
Okay, but that wasn't part of the RFP.
And also, I also think you've misinterpreted the three, three sets of plans because there are three structures, as Savannah indicated, there's that pre-K, the, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, so those are the three structures that the two vendors gave us a quote on, not three different sets of plans.
Well, in the January minutes, I'm sorry, again, the January minutes, she says that we're not doing the pre-K structure either.
I think we got it.
Yeah, I think.
Are you done with your answer?
Yeah.
Okay, so process wise, we have other topics to get on to tonight, so I want to check in with the directors where we're at on moving forward with the Shimick.
So, my question would be like a moving forward question, is there anything we can do to make this playground more accessible, more inclusive? Moving forward, not changing the spot necessarily, but just anything we can still do?
Can I, can I? The PTO has money saved, we had money put aside to pay for the whole playground, and we have spoke openly, we just have to go to a PTO vote, I can't speak for the whole PTO. But I would advocate strongly, as a member of the PTO and as a member of the board next year, that we should spend the money that we have to make the playground more inclusive. Now, can we get the rubber matting? It's just, it's so far out of budget that we could have rubber matting and no playground.
Yeah, but.
So, well, I would love to make changes and improvements on.
We have a $30,000 that we talked about, you know, some people have talked about, it would be great to add more ramps because I think that's a concern, is more ramps.
So.
Well, the PTO.
I guess my question is, is there anything to do with the project, and it happens as. Right, yeah.
To, to have, well, from what I understood after wish list discussions.
So, I do need clarifying, a short clarification, when the playground policy was written, it was written in such a way that the district would provide a basic structure to the schools, okay? And that they should not plan on adding any components to that, that first year, because we're trying to establish a base playground equity across the district. But certainly, they could at any point after it was installed, add components, so that's, that's, that's how that's been presented to.
And that's in the one-year rule, just to get this?
Well, I didn't, that's what we agreed to do in the beginning, can it be revised? Sure. But, and can we make compromises, I've already suggested to the committee that we do compromise, and that if there is a component that needed to be bought, let's get it done, you know, but let's get it built, then when we're a component, we're going to set it. That way, everybody knows that that separate component was paid for by the PTO and not the district.
So, you proceed with the current plan without.
Yes, absolutely, that's the way this plan should go forward, I couldn't agree with Ben more or whatever. We need additional inclusive components that can be added, there's been room left to do it, there's nothing wrong with the basic structure. If there's one change, recommend then that we switch the slide on the, on one of the platforms.
Yes.
With the stair, with a ramp to make it more inclusive, we can do it, great idea, okay? So, we, there are little tweaks, we can do that, even when, even when it arrives and we put it together, so I think there's things we can do.
We'd rather develop me, developmentally accessible components on the first to third grade structure. Then, if you do have those components on there to make it developmentally accessible for those students, what about the fourth through sixth grade structure area?
Look at that drawing.
Is there anything there that is accessible to someone in a mobility device?
Yeah, and I, Brian's the one that came up.
You cannot add ramps to monkey barns, to funneled pieces, uh, there are no.
So, what?
Ground level components in that whole side of the fourth through sixth grade area, so if somebody's in a mobility device, they will be playing with kindergartners, first graders, second graders.
Just to clarify, first through sixth graders can play on the first through sixth grade structures, they can play on those.
Yeah, it's all in one, it's all in one puzzle, so you can move back and forth.
So, they'll only be there with their same age peers as well.
So, one of the, one of the questions I had, and Jenny, after the PTO meeting, the one on your birthday, we spoke afterwards, we talked a little bit about, about some things that the district could do with the district provided portion of the playground. Again, recognize that the playground can be an evolving playground with PTO funds. This is the, the basis to, for which to start from, but one of the questions that I had for you was, what would, what in particular would make the, um, the five through, H5 through 12 structure to the, let me think about it, to the north of the blacktop area, the hard surface area? the five through, H five through twelve structure to the, let me think about it, to the north of the blacktop area, the hard surface area? What would help in that situation? And other than the wood fiber, other than the engineered wood fiber, which we also spoke about. But one of the, one of the very important points that you brought up was that where the, and you guys have my drawings now, I blew them up big so I could see them. But on, on the, um, the handrail, or the accessible, the east side of that, of the structure by the climbing net, by the aquarium climbing net, is that when you get up to that hexagon area that the slide then comes off to the northwest, which then leaves you unable to get back up the structure unless you go around the whole structure.
Yes.
So one, I mean, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I don't think that would be, I mean, I personally agree with you. That wouldn't be.
Well, this is the code. It says consideration must be given to the distance between transport stations and elevator pod.
Hold on, stop. So I suggested, can we get a flip on that? Can we get the slide coming over to the side where the, where the way back up is to make it more accessible? Those are things that I think that, that we can do. Those are, those are important things. But recognizing that this is a basis that this, that the district provides and the PTOs have that to build off of, I think that's an important takeaway here. I think it's a really important takeaway here. Are we ADA compliant on this from what the district is providing? Yes. Is it fully inclusive like, like it, it sounds like people would like?
No.
To me, I'm hearing no.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not meeting what we asked for, the ADA compliance we asked for in the RFP. Do all the structures meet ADA requirements that we asked? The RFPs meet or, and or exceed ADA requirements for the structures in the entire playground. The RFP states for structure two, all elevated platforms need to be wheelchair accessible. Um, structure three, structure requires wheelchair access to all elevated components. When the, um, is there wheelchair access to both of the structures? I mean, this, these are the things, if you look at the RFP and what we had originally asked for, and not the people who showed up at their very first playground meeting to vote, but the people who sat down and made the wish list and compiled the RFP. If you were to look at this RFP, this is what we asked for on there, and that is not happening. And I'm, I'm concerned because the code says, it specifications for elements within a play area create a general level of usability for children with disabilities. Emphasis is in place on ensuring that children with disabilities are generally able to access the diversity of components provided in a play area. Designers and operators are encouraged to exceed the guidelines where possible to remove, to provide increased accessibility and opportunities. Incorporating accessibility into the design of a play area should begin in the, early in the planning process with considerations of layout, circulation paths, and the selection of play components. I don't feel that was done for this playground.
All right, so, thanks. Process point. We're going to go around the table with the directors because we got a couple of items we got to get to before ten o'clock.
Can I, can I say what?
No, right, a process point, I'm sorry. Um, so I want to hear from the directors. Do you want to proceed with Shimick as you've talked about with the optimizations and the PTO ads, or do we want to stop it?
Can I just ask if Kingsley has a suggestion as far as what you would like to say or what you want?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with a lot of points made, I mean, even what Dwayne made, I mean, there's some, I mean, there seems to be a difference between, one, there's a couple of things. One, I think Director DeLoach was one of the few people that said something about the kid. And I haven't been able to say anything about your child just because I've been asked questions, but I do want to make sure that's a part of the discussion. I think a lot of this discussion is really focused on, you know, what I didn't know, some issues from a process standpoint, some other things, which, you know, I'm willing to take, you know, all that responsibility and more, great. But I'm really interested in kind of how we can move this conversation forward to ensure that we have a more inclusive element moving forward. I had that conversation with Melissa over the phone, I've had the conversation with Dwayne, I've had the conversation with Ben. And so I think that kind of what Director Kirsten was talking about, for me, would be the best way forward. In that sense, I think you're going to maybe make a decision on that. But if there's additional components that can be removed or added in compliance with what we were kind of talking about from, again, the base structure standpoint, moving forward, I don't necessarily know if you want to do a committee to kind of discuss what those components should be. I, I do have a problem with how we're talking about children with disabilities because I do feel like when we're talking about children with disabilities, we're only focusing on those that have, um, that are, you know, limited by mobility and you have access to a wheelchair. Because when I talked to Ben about it, you know, I was more expansive in my discussion as far as children with disabilities and whether or not we're talking about true inclusivity across the board. And so as you think about how you put that committee together, I think that's a good question that needs to be addressed because, you know, we can, we can talk about adding different elements, which is great. And I think it's going to be important for your son to make sure that he has that accessibility moving forward. But I also think that if we're talking about inclusivity across the board with a wide range of children with disabilities, we really need to make sure that we're having that conversation as well. And that has been devoid of any conversation that I've had from the beginning of the process until now.
All right, got it. So we've already agreed to establish a committee to look at overall improvements to the handbook and future standards. Are we moving forward with Shimick? Yes or no? My answer is yes. I'm willing to move forward with the optimizations you all have talked about. Brian?
Well, my concern is that we have, um, uh, two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars worth of contracts out there. Two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars worth of contracts out there for the demolition of the existing playground, the preparing of the new site, the purchase of the new playground, and, you know, this, this new way forward with the district assisting all of our schools in setting the basis is, is really the key for me. So I, I see, I, I'm not supportive of halting this playground. I have great concerns about what happens both in pulling out of contracts and ascent, and also with what happens for next year with the Shimick community without a playground.
So I'm hearing yes. Paul?
No, you're on.
I'm torn. I, I want to do the right thing for everybody that's involved here. I know there's a lot of hard work's been put into it. We've already approved some things like Brian said, um.
Just want to get paid the big bucks, so.
My, my concern would be with the delay that there wouldn't be a playground. I can go either way, honestly.
I need a yes or no, Paul.
Look, I see. Can you come back to it?
Director Libby is ready to give his answers. Come back to me.
Laurie?
So I, I'm not clear, and I, maybe you covered this when I stepped out. Are you saying that, that what you're suggesting would mean that there might possibly be no playground?
No, not what I'm suggesting. We move forward with the optimizations these guys are talking about and.
So there is no delay then?
Well.
If you, if you say no.
Then there's going to be a delay of some sort.
Okay, no, but what you're, moving ahead with optimization means no delay.
Yeah, working within the current contract, optimize it however you can optimize it, get the PTO optimization on it.
And make it so that every, every child can play?
At least maximize it within the current context, yeah.
I would like every child to be able, able to play on the playground. So if that can be done within the current context, then I'm a yes. If it can't be done within the current context, then I guess I'd have to know what that meant. I don't know what that means then.
So I'm hearing yes.
He's trying to hit us down.
We just got to decide because.
Yeah, I, I, I want every child to be able to play.
And I think the first thing we did is what's going to really help that going forward, right? Establish a committee, make sure we take learnings from this time into the future.
For the future, yes. But for this particular playground, will every child be able to play moving forward?
All right, Latasha?
So, two things. One, Kingsley or whoever's on this committee, make sure you guys include the ADA checklist. Please, it's provided by the government. Yes, yes, no, no, just do that, please, thank you. Second thing, if you are able to go in with this playground and help make it more accessible to all kids with disabilities, regardless of their ability, because that is important, because we have kids with multiple, multiple things that are, are, are opportunities for them to be able to play with their peers. We want that to happen. Please do that, seriously. Y'all know, I don't want to get on my little stool and do all that fussing, but please do that for our children. If there's a complaint, my thing is let's do the right thing, if we can make it better, if we can make improvements, then my vote is yes. If we just going to be smiling at Latasha and then do something different, then we're going to have a problem. So my hope is that with the PTO dollars or whatever you all have to do, plus the money that we're invested from the district, then we make sure that this is beyond, make it as inclusive as possible. And then with the new regulations that have come out, have a clear checklist about how we do this. Kingsley, if you've got to go to DC and get some training, then do that. Because I just don't want this in the future. My thing is let's take this as a lesson learned. Let's all get on the right page and choose the experts in our community, whether that's Lynn or whoever, and get it done. And then we can move forward. But we just, you know, at some point, we have to move forward, but we need to move forward in the right direction, so.
All right, Chris?
Uh, well, first I want to sort of agree with, is it Tony?
Yes.
Uh, that these vendors know good customer when they see one. And that if we work with these vendors, I feel like, you know, God knows, we're familiar with changers. I mean, things can happen, things can change. Um, I don't think we have to start from scratch. I don't think we have to necessarily delay the thing. I mean, there's still time to, to look into things that could be done to make this better. And I don't think we should rule out changes to what we've already, you know, agreed to with these people because I think they will be open to that. Uh, the other thing is I would be a little bit, uh, I don't know if this is meant to come out this way early, but I, I don't like the idea that we would go forward with the idea of, well, we'll give you minimal compliance. If you want inclusivity, that's up to the PTO to pay for it. Yeah, going forward, I think that we need to be thinking about inclusivity with what we do and not just leaving it. Because then you're going to have the disparities between what PTOs can do in different places. Um, so that's, that's my, my feeling is let's just do what we can. And why can't we just have this looked at for a few more weeks, come back to us? And what I'm hearing, the turnaround time on the delivery of these things in one or four weeks, uh, I think this thing can still happen on schedule. And maybe, maybe it could still be a place that every kid can play on.
So I'm hearing yes?
I'm not a yes. I am, uh, please come back to me with, see what you can do, and then I'll be a yes.
All right, Phil?
Yeah, uh, Chris did a great job. Uh, in the RFP, uh, it says that playground structures delivered date would be on or before June 23rd. Both companies stated that four, four-week delivery time, so the deadline is not past us. And I agree with Tony and what, what has been said as far as, we do not accept a minimum standard for AP classes. We are, we want to lead the state. And when it comes to this issue, um, the acceptable minimal or just a little bit above minimum. And some of these things that are counted as structures are stepping stones, and we counted every single stepping stone. So in our 20, thirteen of them are stepping stones. That's not very inclusive. And we don't think just about the kids today. We think about the kids tomorrow. This is a 25-year investment and it's being pushed by a construction schedule, bond dependent, and the placement of the tenplex. I'm not going to get in the argument of that, but it's a one-year inconvenience for the tenplex that is driving the speed of this. And on a process standpoint, when the board used to have a first, second, and third reading.
Are you yes or no?
I'm going to get there, Chris, you know? When we used to have a first, second, and third reading, it gave a chance for the community to get in and weigh in. And I think this is a prime example of the one-and-done policy that we have right now doesn't serve us well. And I want it, I want it done right. And if it means holding it up for a little bit, and I believe, you know, I, I work with vendors too. And, and for crying out loud, if they know that, that it's, it's going to be done right and we're going to have a showpiece and we can be proud of it for all of our kids, not just some, but all of them, and all kids benefit from everyone being a part of it, then I, then that, that's what we do. And that's what I would urge.
All right, any further direction?
Well, I think timeline's important. Uh, we have two and a half months from the day school's out till the day school starts. And if that equipment arrives.
Dave's also got to maybe weigh in yet.
No, but Dwayne finished. I'm, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. If, if that equipment's arriving on the 20th of June, I have three weeks to get that site ready. And, uh, there's some work that needs to be done, some grading that needs to be done, some dirt needs to be moved, some retaining wall type, maybe.
I get there's challenges, but do you need any more direction?
So, direction, no, but if you delay it, uh, it's not going to be ready for the time of school. I can't guarantee it, plus.
Will the old playground still be there?
Playground, excuse me?
Will the old one still be there?
That's part of the, that's part of the preparation is to remove the old playground. And it really has become an unsafe structure, which we haven't talked much about today.
We haven't said delay, right? I haven't heard say delay. Let's go optimize it.
I heard it from two directors.
I know, but it's not for.
I got it. But I'm just telling you, the reality is the timeline to get it done, it needs to keep moving.
All right, got it. Paul?
I need direction on how to have more inclusive components or how to guide that conversation. What does that look like besides adding an inclusive components with PTO dollars? Are we looking at changing the current design that was voted on by the playground committee? Are you asking me to reconvene that committee and have a conversation? I mean, I just need guidance. There isn't a lot of guidance on this to begin with. I did the best I could, and now I just need to know where to go from here.
Well, there's two elements here. One is the actual playground equipment, and that's, and making that more inclusive. And that can be the focus of the PTO, and we can talk about that, and that's, doesn't have to be done today school start. But the other element is the, is the softball material. And the softball material, uh, right now is planned to be an engineered wood fiber, which Tony talked about. And properly compacted and drainage, it is accessible per ADA. However, we did do some estimates today about what it would cost to put a rubber surface. And to put a rubber surface, we have to put in a concrete subbase, uh, which also has to be drained. We put a very conservative cost on that of two hundred thousand dollars upgrade from what we've already got committed to do that. So there's two.
To Savannah's point, we're going to need your leadership to.
Yeah, I, I, and I'll give you all the help I can. We'll do all the estimates.
I'd love to Dwayne, Dwayne to facilitate.
My, my concern is, is that when we, when the vote was taken at the Shimick committee meeting, that Mr. Van Hemer said he would come back and talk to us about this design and try and make it more inclusive.
And I said, if you'd invite me, I was never invited.
Okay, well, I, I'm, I'm not sure why you weren't invited because the, the concerns were still ongoing.
When's your next meeting?
We don't have anymore. That's what I'm concerned about. So I want to make sure that we get this on because we've already been promised by Mr. Van Hemer.
This is a PTO meeting that we're talking about, or are we talking about a playground?
Good question. Whatever it takes.
I'll come once a week. That's what it takes.
One of the things that we did uncover, I think it's in the playground handbook, that board members should be aware that there is a board policy that's been set that you can't add on equipment to playgrounds.
And that's a method of the last speech.
Perry, if you need any help with that, we can change that next meeting.
Well, it's just that Dwayne's been saying, right, well, we can add on to this. You know, you got a policy, says you can't.
Is anybody against a change to that? Yeah, there you go. And we're okay with, we'd be willing to entertain that change very quickly. In fact, I don't understand that either. I didn't want to get into it, but I don't know why we waited.
Perry, I think we just plan. We plan the, what we're going to do next and move forward.
All right, Paul. Sorry.
Seriously?
So one of the things I wanted to bring up is one, as a district, we talk a lot about, I mean, what I've seen with special education over the past 12 years. We talk a lot about one thing and we do another. And one of the things we've talked about a lot in our district is the NPPS program. So it says in the playground policy that we've adopted, we've adopted the NPPS program and the principles of the NPPS program. And if you look at the principles of the NPPS program, they're all about more than minimum. They're all about a very safe way for kids to get to those, um, to get to those, um, to be accessible, to make the playground accessible. They're not about, you know, and we haven't even seen the video of him being on the horn playground and his wheelchair almost tipping. So you want to talk about lawsuits and money. What happens when a kid in a wheelchair breaks their neck? Because they tipped over because the structure or the, the, um, the, the service is not, is not being maintained appropriately. And I know you think you are, but it's not happening. And that's in Horn, our most recently, the, the one that was just most recently done. So the challenges, guys, when you've worked with these families for so many years like I have, you hear them. I mean, you know, you hear all the stories so similar that they're promised one thing and then another thing happens. And they're promised one thing and another thing happens. And when Tony talked about expectations, the NPPS principles that we have set in the district that we've adopted are everything but this playground and this surface. And that's what's so sad. And I feel really bad for the, for the people who've been involved because she hasn't received very much guidance on this. And, and we needed, I think if Tony or somebody from A, who would have been available to have met with them, this, this process would have been so differently and people wouldn't be so divided. And I, I just find that this happens all the time in special education. And again, as my children, they've never had these experiences. I've never had to, to do these kinds of things for my kids. We as a district have to figure out a way to do things differently with special education. We have to. We cannot continue the retaliation. And if you want to talk about how Melissa feels right now, we've already filed an OCR violation. We've already filed with the Department of Justice. Who else do we need to file with? Because they're appalled at what's happening and they're appalled that we couldn't even get Tony at the table until we asked. Kingsley wouldn't let it, Merle wouldn't let it. The ADA expert from Chicago.
All right, Laura, thanks. Thanks. Paul, where are you at?
Uh, I'm, I'm more aligned with Latasha and.
Uh, I'm, I'm more aligned with Latasha and Laura in that I'm willing to move forward if we're going to work out, like we said earlier.
Need further direction?
I got what I need.
Further direction?
Will it come back to us at some point, so we can see what the progress is?
Yeah, well, I think we'll be back. We'll let you know what we're doing. I'll make sure, I'll, Savannah's leaving us, but I'll make sure that I stay involved. I have a personal thing I'd like to say, is that I grew up in a home with two disabled parents. I know what it's like. That's all I need to say.
I'm going to ask everybody to stay in your seats for one second.
Dwayne, with all due respect, you don't know what it's like until you sit in a wheelchair.
I've, I've lived it for 67 years, Harry.
All right, I'm going to ask everybody to stay in their seat for one second. We're going to finish this meeting in like 30 seconds or a minute, so... Are we going to table everything till next session? Is there anything urgent tomorrow? I would have liked to get into that. But we can come back next time and do translation, right? All right, so we're going to table everything else. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sir, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please adjourn.